... With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good morning.
Good morning.
My wife hears a carpenter song comes on, she goes, "In the seventies when I was in high school, you were listening to AC/DC, I was singing the carpenter song." She tells me that all the time. So I used to hear those two. Do I say that a lot? I heard you, Jerry. It's so in our ears. Hey, you know, I tell everybody, I'm lost in the seventies in music. You know, I still listen to Queen, Foreigner, AC/DC, Seeger.
Stop it, you're giving your anger away.
Only good music. I got, had somebody give me one of these T-shirts that said something like, you know, you think they'll be playing, fifty years from now, you think they'll be playing the songs today on the radio? They'll still be playing in the seventies. Public comments. Anybody who'd like to speak to the board, ask you to get up. Give us your name and address. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number forty from Thursday, October 12th, 2017, approval of Phil's commitment.
So moved?
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Medio Leggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappacanji?
Yes. Yes. General entries.
Motion approved, general entry number one.
Second. Go call.
Commissioner Medio Leggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappacanji?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Travels, GJ C.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. This training is for two of our counselors who specialize in sexual abuse to attend the 2017 ACTA conference for continuing education credit, and it is paid by the DYS discounter grant fund.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Motion approved, Travels.
Motion approved, Travels, two A.
Go call.
Commissioner Medio Leggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappacanji? Commissioner Chappacanji?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes.
Change seats.
Rigetti, Travels.
I'm not saying anything. Agreements.
Recycle. Morning Commissioners, this is an agreement with Crystal Township, we're hosting a drop-off recycling site.
Sheriff's Department.
Morning everyone. B is an agreement with Bryce Marina, provided storage and memorizing the way a boat could use out of paint hole in the amount of $755,000, amount general. And C is an agreement with SNM Auto Body to dispose of the use of a lake for $1,985,000, which is also amount general, if you buy it from rent, left over funds. And D is an agreement with Pink Collision, repaired to one of our cruisers, it got damaged in the amount of $16,000.30, amount general.
Sixteen hundred?
Sixteen hundred.
I'm sorry. Okay, motion approved.
Motion approved, agreements, orders A through B.
Second. Go call.
Commissioner Medio Leggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappacanji?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Change orders, OMB grants.
Good morning Commissioners, this is a change order to extend the time frame for implementation to the Crystal Project, and we're just beginning to develop that program.
Is that Jimmy Duchy and the Dragon speak, we need to bring him in.
No, it's not Jimmy.
Alright, change orders, motion approved.
Motion approved, change orders for A.
Second.
Commissioner Medio Leggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappacanji?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Appointments, Commissioners, appointments following individuals served on Mahoning County Children's Services Board effective November 1st, 2017, for a three-year term, Marilyn Montes.
Motion approved, appointments, five A.
Second. Go call.
Commissioner Medio Leggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappacanji?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion approved, resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Commissioner Medio Leggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappacanji?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Resolutions, Commissioners, OMB.
Commissioners, this is a resolution to create a Medicaid sales tax transition fund. This is related to the sales tax revenues that the county will be losing, and this is transition aid that is a one-time amount that would be coming to the county in the amount of $5,235,592 to be allocated over two payments, one in November 1st and the other one in February 1st. Annually, the county will be losing our potential that we would have had revenues of about $4.4 million with this happening. The state has done a one-time fix for counties, and I'm still a box about this, but we're looking for a CCA, which Carol is actively working on, Commissioners have been involved with to continue to put this issue out there, that the county needs a long-term solution, but this will help us going into 2018, and we should be able to take some things into 2019 also.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, $4.4 million a year we receive as part of the MCO sales fund. The House voted to override, the governor's wiping that out to the counties, and the Senate chose not to.
The Senate is looking at providing possibly an additional $50,000 next year, and possibly another $30,000 at the end of next year, depending on the state's revenue, but there is no continuing out at that point.
So right now, instead of getting four point, instead of our sales tax, which includes $4.4 million annually, we're gonna get $5 million as a one-time payment for a two-year period. So we'll get $2.5 million, losing about $2 million a year in our ongoing revenue, with no intent to fill the hole after 2019. So obviously, once again, the state's playing politics, hoping that whenever a new governor goes in, if they correct that problem, then they look like the bad guys and not the people that are in on it. So, you know, instead of doing the right thing on behalf of the residents of the state of Ohio, they choose to do the political thing, and...
And it's an onpartisid issue, because it's, Republican county is worse than Mahoning County. One Republican county will lose everything.
When Anthony and Carol and I went down to the State House to lobby on behalf of maintaining the MCO sales tax, the head of the finance committee said, his county that he lives in will lose, what was it, ninety percent of their budget? Because they're one of the rural counties that they, that he lives in, depended on that for ninety percent. Basically, their response was, rather deal with my constituents than my colleagues in the Senate, and voting to impose or continue a tax.
This is gonna be interesting though, because we're gonna keep an eye on that county, because that'll be like our target, to find out how they're gonna get their money to function after this. Where are they gonna get funds to function in government? If they're in a rural area, it's gonna be interesting to see what they do. You know, I'm just waiting, because, I mean, you know, we're getting a bad hit, and it's gonna be tough on Mahoning County, but I just wanna see when they abolish and have no money, how they're gonna exist with ten percent.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate that, you know, we plan, we prepare, and we budget, and we cut. And through no fault of our own, on an annual basis, we're filling a hole that the state creates every year, whether it be tangible personal property tax, inheritance tax, local government funds, the state continues to balance their budgets on backs of local communities and let them face the music. And I've said this before, we need to, we need to have a statewide initiative that takes away, you know, we pay seven and a quarter percent sales tax on Mahoning County, and how much of it goes to the state? Five and three-quarters goes to the state of Ohio. We need to do a statewide initiative and take back one percent and include on the ballot that any state increase in sales tax has to go to a vote of the constituents in the state of Ohio, just like it has to Mahoning County. Let them sell to the general public what their needs are, what their uses are, and let them prove the need, just like we have to do with every sales tax. So, never mind. You know, if somebody, you know, all I know is, how many people are sick of hearing issue two? Yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, issue two. I, I, you know, I mean, you know, it's crazy. So if you put initiative on that does the right thing on behalf of the people, you can do it. You just need somebody to, you know, what is it they say if, if, if nobody cares who gets credit? You know, think how many good things could be done. You know, so, anyway, I guess that's, that's our tangent for today. That's A, on resolutions, Commissioners, HR, OMB. OMB.
Good morning Commissioners, good morning Nancy, that's a great segue into this. In an effort to keep our vendors competitive, we went out for a bid for our healthcare benefits. There were three bidders, and the awards being through this resolution given to Medical Mutual and Mahoney Hospital. Thank you.
Alright. I... Dimensional visitors, Steve.
Good morning. 2017 will mark the 10th anniversary of the Mahoning Valley Historical Society's Memories of Christmas Past exhibition at the Arms Museum every holiday season. We'd like to sponsor, to help promote that great event that draws over 5,000 people every year.
OMB grants.
Good morning Commissioners, I'll defer to Chief.
I told the senior form full year. But the OMB Resolution Authority is boarded into an MOU with township facilities and villages for the sport that has material response team for operating and maintaining, maintenance of the team, taking in for all our help and working with us and taking the Commissioners for the ongoing funding, you know, for that.
Thank you, appreciate your job. Senator.
I guess, morning Commissioners, here's a recommendation from Mahoning County San Attorney Engineering Department to the Board of County Commissioners, that in accordance with provisions of a construction contract under Article 18, is for the termination of a contract with the contracted party. The department is also requesting the board through this section, by termination, allowing the department to pursue the action as provided for in the contract. And at its, annually, the board approves the bond formula will be used for companies wanting to provide services for the excavation and connections to the sanitary sewer through lateral connections to protect the residents of the county or infrastructure. We require competent bidders for, or competent companies to post a bond with us, and every year we issue a new bond form, so this is for 2018.
Thanks, John. Resolutions.
Motion approved, resolutions, letters A through F.
Second. Go call.
Commissioner Medio Leggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappacanji?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Alrighty. Talk to you as good as you order. Kat, any good, any order?
Always good. Well, we're wrapping up our paving, we're still, still pushing forward. We got maybe another month yet to go. We're gonna do as much as we can till, till the snow flies, but with that being said, we're getting ready to start changing gears and preparing our fleet for winter. So all orders are being made this way.
And all that says November is gonna be...
We're not gonna have winter.
I hope you're right.
No weather, no snow, no ice.
Well, just remember, when we have a mild, November, December, it's snowing in May.
We're not gonna have that, we're, it's blowing off, we're gonna be Florida in the next couple of months. We'll change.
Before you know it, it will be winter, but like I said, we're changing gears, getting ready to.
Moving it all around now, no stuff.
I, I see nothing but good things happening. Roads are looking good, they're proven everywhere. Borini Road looks great, it's been really nice.
Very smooth. And they fly up and down Borini.
I might take my old Merrell, just so I can race up and down the road.
I saw him out there with stick braving his name in the road.
Did you do that?
I put my knee in it and I'm on three.
Actually, I can't say that that hasn't been done before. Unless anything...
Put a note under there.
Put a little... I have to say one thing. Alright. I got an email from someone that, and this is a good thing, Bob, so don't look all upset, because this is something good this time. From a person that has a facility in, in the county, and I think they emailed you guys as well, and they have had back bills on some of their clients that were through your department and could never get anything done, and I got an email the other day, and they said they were so excited to know that, that finally, that the back bills that they have had for months, and maybe, I don't know, six months to a year passed, and they have not been paid, have immediately was worked on, to find out the problem and rectify it and, and have a solution for them going forward. So I think Melissa, you were involved in that as well, and I want to commend you, push on that part of it. I mean, you know, we, we sit here and we say things about social service department because we, of course, get calls from, and the three of us get all the calls from people that are disrundled or they have issues. But when things are good, you very seldom get a call and say, hey, that really went well, you know, this one helped me, that one helped me, you don't get those calls. So this time I did, and I told this person that I would mention that at the meeting, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Bob, what did you?
As you all know, may know, my name is Bob Bush, I'm the Director, Mahoning County Department of Job and Family Services, and I, I can't sit without sounding an alarm, although it is sounding. And it's about our Medicaid program and President Trump's continuing efforts to defund it and repeal and replace. As you remember, President Obama on his way out and during the transition said, it needs some tweaking, tweaking, and whatever you do, you do. Well, President Trump seems to be, to fulfill a campaign promise, he wants to be able to say it's repealed and replaced, although they don't have a replacement. Through executive order, he is starting the process of eliminating the subsidy for the insurance companies who provide the insurance for a lot of our clients that are in Medicaid, under that Medicaid coverage. I'm not a fan of insurance companies. However, that, that's gonna cost lives, as far as I'm concerned, because you can't expect an insurance company to provide their service, and they lose, they lose money. And, and what that subsidy does, it allows them to offer at affordable rate, and that's part of the title, Affordable Care Act, and still, I guess, make so much of a profit. Because of the Medicaid expansion, Mahoning County has an additional over 27,000 clients, residents of Mahoning County, that have insurance covered because of that act. We're probably pushing about 70,000 clients in total, including our nursing home population. So it's gonna impact a lot, millions of people nationwide. And you hear about the rates, they have edged up, and again, that's what one of the things President Obama said had to be addressed. But for the states that bind into the Affordable Care Act, and I do commend Governor Casey's for doing that, those rates have kinda stopped ascending, and in some cases aren't, just descending. The last two funding periods, periods in the state of Ohio, the Medicaid budget came in under budget for those last, those four years. And the states that did not expand or bind to the expansion, their insurance rates are astronomical. And they have more people uninsured than they did before the program took place. So I just simply wanna say, and, and you have this, sometimes there's a fallacy about who's on Medicaid. And I think it's purposely done that you show those people are Medicaid. Unemployed, the generational, people that are on the system, those that don't wanna work and won't work. And ladies and gentlemen, that's simply not true also. I'll tell you two quick stories when I'm sitting down. About a week and a half ago, I was at, I was at work. That's astronomical. And one of my employees, one of my income maintenance people, was walking with this guy. And I, he was a white gentleman, seen middle age, and it was morning, so I spoke to both of them, and they spoke, in the elevator, but just us three. And he had this distressed look on his face, he was like... So I'm standing there, he looked at my worker and he said, you know what, miss? This is the first time I've ever done this, I don't know what to do. And she looked at him, she said, sir, it's gonna be alright. And you could see him kinda calm down. That's what our programming is about, helping those who need temporary help to get from position A to position B, and something usually catastrophic gets happened. And that, and I talk to unemployed, I thank them immensely, because that's what we're all about. Those are the type of folks we help. Before, before the expansion, remember this, you're gonna get healthcare if you were on SSI or disabled, and you couldn't work. Well, that picked up all of our student and college population, all of our young people and all of that. So easy to say, I can't work, I'm on SSI, get insurance, and then you can't work. There's a young man I know that had got an implant, pacemaker, when he was 16 years old, went to school in camp. He would just collapse, collapse, collapse. He got a pacemaker, he was uninsurable after that. Obviously, pre-existing conditions. Because of the Affordable Care Act, he was able to get insurance, and he was able to work. He went on to Ohio State, he graduated with a degree in engineering physics, he graduated. He's now working for a company in Columbus, making about $68,000 a year. His first job out of school. Obviously, he has insurance through his company and all of that. But I just wanna say, without the Affordable Care Act, chances are, that kid would die. And it was my nephew, it was my nephew, and I know that explicitly. I'm just saying that to say, this whole thing about who's gonna be covered, who's not gonna be covered, who's gonna be suffering, we're gonna suffer. My nephew, your mom, your dad, your neighbor, your sisters and brothers. So, when you have a chance to speak up for, I know Senator Brown is opposed to what the President is doing, and I believe Senator Portman supports what the President is doing. I know Tim Ryan is opposed to what the President is doing. But it's gonna impact this country, and I think it's gonna cost us lives, folks. So as the Director of JFS, and, and most of that stuff comes through our door, I just could not sit any longer and kind of accept it. Whatever the President does, he does, but at the end of the day, people die. People are gonna die, because they lose that coverage. It's just, that's the thing.
Bob, is there any, is there anything that your organization is doing, like, like your state organization?
I'm, I'm gonna start pushing, pushing them, they, they, as an organization, they like to stay out of the fray. But I know the large counties, I've talked to those directors, and they have the same feeling that I do. Can you imagine Cleveland, you're talking, you got $70,000, you're talking hundreds of thousands of people.
Yeah, you're talking about everybody, not just the system, but the state.
And, and again, a lot of the people we serve are the working poor. And I tell this to my new employees in particular, how you treat people. If you go to JFS right now, we see about 300 people a day in our lobby. You get about another 500 phone calls a day. And you ask those folks, how many you wanna be here? They don't, nobody, they don't wanna be here, because we make you jump through some hoops. We don't just hand it out like a lot of people think, we make you jump through some hoops. And some of it, it embarrasses me to ask some of those questions. And you're doing it to get help, or maybe a hundred dollars worth of cash. So I just want you to be, be aware that, that, just put a face on it, on this whole thing about this, this Medicaid. And, and, and I, I think at the end of the day, the President wants to be able to stand there and say, another campaign promise kept, but I bet he won't stand on the steps of a hospital and say that, because those folks need it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Say, you know, and I totally agree with you, Bob, right now, my mother worked 50 years, retired in 2007, and she's in a hospital now. I've written a supplement check, you know, that she pays every month, you know, for 300 and some dollars to supplement her insurance, it's because she buys it. Right now, I mean, three weeks ago, she was walking a dog around the block, right now, she can't move her arms or her legs, you know, and she's got an infection, they can't find, they shuffle between the hospital and the, and the nursing home, and everybody looks at some 80-some-year-old woman and thinks, eh, you know, this is some old woman's gonna die, well, you know? And nobody puts a face with it, Bob. And when I walk in there, and I show them a picture, and I say, this is my mom, three weeks ago on Sunday, when we went to church, went to Charlie's Restaurant and had breakfast, she walks up and down 13 steps, comes in and out, it's this woman laying in bed, you think's ready to die, but some old woman, it's, you know, not a big deal. You know, three weeks ago, she may be old, but three weeks ago, she was walking around like you and me, you know? And now they say, well, she's belligerent, unruly, I say, yeah, you know, but, I mean, she's not, they, they told me she was threatening, okay, and I said, she's threatening, she can't move her arms or her legs, she's in bed. You know, verbally, and I said, what would you be if, if three weeks ago, you were like you and me, and now you're like her? You know, so, you're right, you put a face with it, and, you know, and when you apply for things, they said, oh, well, you know, she can't apply, she can't get Medicaid for this, because, you know, she has more than $2,000 in the bank. You know, okay, she's got $12,000 in the bank. You know, so, you know, it's all, you know, it's all relative, and it's all, you know, it's, it's, you know, when it impacts people's families and friends and people they know, you know, because there's, you know, I have, I have a lot of friends that are working poor, working two, three jobs, don't have the privileges or have had the, the opportunities that most of us or a lot of us have had, you know, and through no fault of their own, in a lot of cases. So, you know, you, you need to look at people, not promises, you know? Not political promises, that's for sure. Anybody else? Marty, I see Marty Looney there, Anthony, Anthony, you know, jeez, oh man, I, I don't even wanna tell people why you have a sling on your arm. He rides a motorcycle with no helmet, he's got a nice Harley, he gets on a 10-speed bike, puts a helmet on, and he falls off. He falls off of his 10-speed bike, and now he's got a sling on his arm like an invalid. Anthony, what are we gonna do with him?
I don't think I could describe the situation better.
What are we gonna do with him?
I'm glad you called it out publicly, though. Feel a lot better. So we've got an, the Port Authority, we have a board meeting next week at Jackson Township on the 25th. We're excited about that, they're hosting us, because we do a lot of projects. You're all aware, we've worked diligently with you as the Commissioners, when they took back the Enterprise Zone and decided to go with more of a TIF. The Township is thrilled to death with the Commissioners and their support and their work. And you're encouraging the Port Authority, Randy and Sarah and I and the team are really excited about that. So we're going to show that off for our Board of Directors and our Board Chairman, what we're doing in Jackson Township. We also get to announce a new project out there that you'll be excited about, that we're gonna work with. And of course, you're aware, we're helping with, YSU is expanding again. The enclave is moving along, if you haven't got a chance to see that project grow quickly, that's exciting. And I think there's more on that forefront. Finally, speaking of education in the city of Youngstown, we're working through our lease with the Eastern Gateway Community College to expand in the city of Youngstown. The Port Authority is in the process of acquiring the Harshman Building. That building's been sitting dormant for six, eight years, I think now, and we're gonna put it back in productive use. We probably have 80% of it occupied with tenants before we've even bought it, and probably even more than that actually, then we're gonna move our offices there too. So, we're excited, there's gonna be five new classrooms and seven offices in that building for Eastern Gateway, so they're going to expand here, so, good things going on, we really appreciate your support. Thank you.
You guys are doing a great job.
Appreciate it.
That building is beautiful.
Yeah.
That conference room there is all old.
Isn't that gonna be, we're gonna keep that, yeah. That's gonna be, we don't know how we're gonna...
There's a kitchen up there, too.
There is, we'll kitchen that, it's gonna be a nice little place, so, we don't have to do much to that side of it. But the whole downstairs will be all new, and new facade will look beautiful for the area.
Kevin, they have the money to do it, now make sure you keep an eye on them.
I'll bring them to come to your office.
The ISET on the board for task, you know, the treatment alternatives for street crimes for five, six years, and that was their offices, was in the Harshman Building, just a really nice facility, a nice opportunity, you know? So, it's good... So it's good to reactivate more buildings in the city of Youngstown. It's driving down there.
So excited to be a part of it.
And that's great. Anybody else? Jim?
Yeah, I just want to give the Commissioners a little update about the Hazmat Team. This year, we had at least eighteen calls of service so far, which is about double our calls of service over the history of the department. So we're seeing a lot of increase in calls. However, there, it's a great partnership with the Sheriff because Mahoney needed to free up to go to, like, just yesterday, we had a diesel spill, and in fact, I showed up before the chief even got a chance to call me. So when that occurs, we move things a lot faster. The roadway gets opened up quicker, we get the mess cleaned up, all that stuff. So it's been really, really awesome this year. I mean, I hate to see the number of calls, but it's been really working out well with the Sheriff. Mahoney's doing different things and able to handle those problems and stuff like that. So we're pressing forward and making things look good. Just an unweird amount of mercury calls this year. We had three different mercury calls. I'm talking a lot.
Tell them about the laundry, man.
Yeah, the, um, the food mart on, it was a new road next to, I was at that one restaurant.
Tracks.
Tracks, yeah. Yeah. It's kind of, it's kind of like an ongoing investigation. We're trying, still trying to find the girl, but she showed up with a detergent bottle full of mercury. She poured it in the laundry, in the washer. She looks in, and she knew something was wrong, so she took the bottle through to the trash. The next morning, a guy comes to take the trash out, the bottle full of mercury. He goes, why is this bottle so heavy? He opens it up for mercury on the parking lot. So that's how we get the initial call. So he had about over a hundred ounces of, or actually about close to a thousand.
Where do you find mercury? Well, what's?
I don't know. I mean, somebody.
On the monitor.
It was a lot, it was a lot of mercury, so.
You know, it's funny how people look at things because I remember, you probably all remember, when we were kids in the sixties, you could, you, you rolled around with your mercury.
Like a silver surfer. So after all that investigation, we, we got the video and all that stuff, and then we went back to the E P A and the washing machine caught positive for the mercury vapors, and we had to take, tell them to take it out of service. That whole washer had to be taken apart, full of mercury. I mean, it's, you know.
Well, she dumped it into, you know, I don't know, she must not know it was in there either.
Yeah, she just poured it out, and you can see her, and she called people over, and they're all looking in, in their washer and, and.
Yeah, but how'd it get into the?
Yeah.
Well, she brought it in, she thought it was detergent. It was in a detergent bottle.
Wow. Did she put that, like, in the batter top here?
I don't know. I don't know what she did, but it was, that was, that was the day that I had an overgunner on, you know, so. But that's, yeah, that's, that's literally like the third mercury call. We had one in Jackson, guy had a big jar of it, and he wanted to get rid of it, like, sent it to the green team, and they had to drop it off. Then we had another one in Youngstown. These guys are on the porch drinking, had a big bottle of mercury.
We're still going.
That's wild, Jim.
So, yeah, it's just, it's kind of weird, but we're moving forward, everything's doing good, and, you know, we're taking care of the community.
Great. Anybody else? Carol? Oh, yes, yes.
Don't forget your peace race.
Oh, that's this weekend. Are you going to?
Yes, some history. I ran it forty years ago, running against Sunday. I ran it with people that a lot of you might not know. They were Rogers, Frank Shorter. They were the guys that really lost the marathon. Came here, and they couldn't compete with us local guys because of the hills. It used to be the International Peace Race, now it's the Peace Race, and we used to get people from all over the world. I'm not as fast as I was then, but I run now for the memory of getting off that.
Beautiful.
That's fantastic. Is Gina running?
I don't think so. Gina does cross the country or cross the.
No. Does she really?
Yes.
That's amazing, yeah. Cross, but those people are maniacs. They're maniacs.
Yes.
You know, it's funny you say that about the peace race. When I had that nightclub in Youngstown on Fifth Avenue in the eighties, we hosted it one year. We were one of the hosts, and we held a thousand people. And we're right in front of the Y S U football stadium. So Burger King came in, and they set up flame boilers in our restaurant, or in the kitchen portion of our, of our nightclub. And I want to say it was nineteen eighty-three or four. And, and when they had the peace race, all the runners came in, and we gave them free draft beer and a Burger King, right? And they came in, Burger King never served so many hamburgers, and we must have went through six, seven cakes of beer. And I'm telling you, them runners, they drank. They were after the race. They were thirsty, and they drank a lot of draft beer, but it was, it was pretty neat.
We're parked at one time.
Yeah. And back then, they, they had, you know, you're right, like Frank Shorter and those different people came in. I don't remember who.
Yes. So I'm looking forward to that.
Well, if I could walk down and see you run by, I'd try it. I don't know that it'll work.
Hey, Jim, maybe, maybe afterwards, you can give some bicycle lessons to Anthony?
I don't know.
Because you ride bikes too, you know?
And I had a chipmunk go in front of me about two years ago. I hit the front brake not knowing how you stomp dead. Before I know it, the back wheel's coming off over my head, and I'm flying, so I got all skinned.
Oh.
But I went out and bought a helmet and gloves. I never use that front brake now.
Yeah. You can flashbacks.
I think you guys better get old-fashioned.
I'm telling you, you know, hit the brake on the pedal. Just walk. Just walk. The, the rule of thumb, now, I'm the biggest animal lover in the world. The big, the, the rule of thumb is that you just go through it because more likely than not, you're going to miss it.
Right.
Because they're moving, you're trying to swerve, you don't know where they're going. Just keep going straight and try to slow it down, you know?
My luck, I get them.
You're here to do?
Carol? No, I just, everybody have a good week, aren't you still on like this? I don't know.
Yeah, we have to be, I'm sorry.
Hooray or? I don't know. Both.
Anthony?
No, I'll reserve a little next week.
All right. Well, I thank everybody for listening to our soapbox. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.